Yeah.
So were our child or level or?
Yeah.
Right on time, right on time. Yes, he does. He runs a good meeting.
Are we going to remind everybody about the start of preservation day next week?
I was, but if you want to. We also have a. So we need a preservationist. And then Sam had mentioned that there is.
Have you watched the?
What about the amphibians?
I did, but I didn't finish it.
Yeah, too bad I'm past amphibians trying to work.
I liked it. I was wondering. Really? And that's on camera. That's on camera plus, right? Right, Amazon, okay.
Is rainbow moving?
Yes, um, the university.
If you're wondering about.
There was not. There was something about.
Can I have a motion, please, to adjourn from executive session at seven thirty?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned from executive session and we can now call the roll for the regular meeting.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mayor Snably?
I'm here. So at this time, we will have a pledge of allegiance, which you are invited to join if you desire.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any changes or adjustments needed? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. We'll move to participation by the public. Anyone wishing to address counsel on items that are not on tonight's agenda can come forward at this time. Hi, Susie. And state your name and address for the record and we'll give you five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Susie Hummel. I'm at forty-six eighty-nine Hickory Hill Drive in Oxford. Um, I am here on behalf of TOPPS and I, we have two, we had two big wins this, this week that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention. One was Sharefest, which was a lot of work, but we brought in three, three thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven pounds of food, just food alone. Um, that is more than the past two years by several hundred pounds of food. Um, so almost two tons of food. And then in addition to that, we had some of our clients put together requests, like if they needed a microwave or they needed some lamps or they needed some fans, that type of thing. Um, and we were able to fulfill all of the requests from all of our clients. So dishes, silverware, furniture, uh, fans, microwaves, lamps, all that kind of stuff. So we were able to gather enough stuff to be able to give that stuff to our clients. So we were really happy about that. The other big win, um, we have Jessica Green to thank. Um, we partnered with Jessica in applying for an eviction diversion and housing stability grant with Interact for Health. And we found out earlier this week that we were awarded, I guess just yesterday, that we were awarded the grant. So through this grant, we will receive, we combined between the city and TOPPS, will receive a one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. We have eighteen months to run our proposed program. With positive performance, we can apply again after another eighteen months of operations. Um, this money will help us hire a full-time housing stability staff person. It will help us provide legal assistance to those that are facing possible discrimination or unfair housing practices. And thirdly, it will help with a communication campaign partnering with Home down in Cincinnati on tenant rights, making sure that the tenants know what their rights are so that they're not unfairly being evicted. So we're super excited about this and we really think that this is going to be a huge win for the city of Oxford. So more details to come, but, but we wanted to share our good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie. We very much appreciate it. Is there anyone else who'd like to address counsel tonight? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we'll move then to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do any items need to be removed for discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. We'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing a sub-grant agreement between the city of Oxford and Talawanda Oxford Pantry and Social Services for the construction of a new community service facility.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
Good evening, councilors. I am very excited to be here to talk about TOPPS some more. So, um, in two thousand and twenty-three, almost two years ago this week, um, we applied for one point five million from Butler County Commissioners for ARPA funds for the construction of a new TOPPS facility. The county awarded us this funding and we've been working closely with TOPPS for two years, um, to prepare their facility for construction. Just as a reminder, since the county funds could only be used for construction, the city also passed legislation to grant three hundred thousand of our own ARPA funds to assist with their design and engineering costs and any other construction costs that may occur. TOPPS is now very close to getting their building permit. Um, they have posted a public bid, they selected a contractor, um, and we've worked with our attorneys to develop the sub-grant agreement to ensure proper use of funds and to guide the dispersment of funds as TOPPS, um, develops their construction schedule. So we do, um, I have representatives from TOPPS here this evening if you have any questions, but excited to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there anyone from TOPPS that wants to say something or you want to wait to see if there's any question? Okay. Uh, is there anybody from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you, councilors. Comments or questions?
Fantastic. Um, I guess I could ask, uh, some of the things we talked about. Possibility of tornado shelter built in.
Just ran out of money.
Yeah, I was worried about that. And we still have hopes for solar on the roof, but that will probably be separate funding, right? That we might.
I am not aware of that.
Okay.
That's something where we've been talking with TOPPS about.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry, that was less.
Oh, I was like, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, just it's, it's so nice when, I mean, the conversation about this goes back years. And, and so it's so nice when things that have been talked about are almost at the building permit phase, which is just, that's really real. So, um, and with a, and I can't, with a scheduled to need to construct and spend it. So again, what, when are we hoping doors might open on the facility?
We, we need to be done by September of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
So says ARPA.
Okay, so there's a deadline to work by. So it's very, very exciting. Would be nice to be there for that.
You will.
Groundbreaking.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Thanks, everybody, for your efforts. I want to especially call out Anne, who first brought this idea to my attention while she was still working for TOPPS. And it's been a long road and congratulations to you for getting it started. And congratulations to the staff at TOPPS today who are bringing it through to the finish line. We really appreciate everyone's efforts. I'm sorry about the tornado shelter. I, that is a big disappointment to me, but I understand the problem.
Something we should address.
We'd have to figure out another way to deal with that, yes. Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? All right. All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, congratulations. All right, you can read the second.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement pertaining to the Oxford area trails multimodal transportation project phase five with E V R Investments LLC.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
Hello again, thank you. Um, on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, council passed an ordinance to appropriate certain properties um, by E V R Investments to expand the Oxford area trail system by adding a roadway for the multimodal trail. Then on April twenty-third, the city and the E V R, um, mediated consistent with the mediation process for appropriation cases and under the Ohio Revised Code. Um, and during that process, we, um, came to an agreement for the city to purchase this multimodal path alignment and a three-acre parcel aligning seven thirty-two for a price of two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. The city also agrees to place a natural barrier along the south side of the, um, trail area to install trail cameras and to place signage denoting private property outside of the Oxford area trail area. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much. Council have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I would just thank all the parties, including our law director and staff, for negotiating, um, through to a amicable bulk, uh, agreement with the property owners, which I think will not only allow, enable our trail to continue, but the acreage, I think, will be an asset that can be adjunct to the trail, which I think will be a good thing.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to waive the fees adopted in the fee ordinance for the parking meter cost for the annual Oxford Masonic Lodge car show at a cost not to exceed one thousand four hundred and four dollars.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
Good evening. In two thousand and twenty-four, the Mason's Car Show was held on a Sunday when there is typically free parking and the organizers requested a waiver of parking and council approved this request. This year, the Mason Car Show will be on a Saturday when parking is typically charged and they are again requesting a waiver of fees for this event. They're requesting one hundred and seventeen parking spots at twelve dollars a day for a total of one thousand four hundred and four dollars in waiver for their events. This event is similar to the chamber in that it is an all-day, large-scale event. Um, it is staff-intensive and closes the Uptown for an entire day. We talked about some challenges last time, but instead of repeating them all again, I would say that based on council feedback from the chambers request, or excuse me, from the similar chamber event at the May sixth meeting, staff are working to develop an approach to events on how to handle requests for waiver fees and we hope to report back to you with these ideas in summer, later summer, twenty twenty-five. But with that in mind, for consistency's sake, we would have no issue with waiver fees.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Hearing that, councilors? I would just point out that this is a lot of money. It is a lot of parking that is used by the Uptown businesses. Saturday is a very busy day. And I think we need to think about this very carefully because it also sets a precedent. And so we have to then look at every other organization who might want to do something like that on a Saturday. Um, I've talked to some of the, not everybody, and I did not do a scientific poll, but I did talk to some of the, uh, business owners uptown and they are not happy about losing parking and access to their stores for that period of time. And on a Sunday, it wasn't that big of a deal. And Sundays, we don't have parking. You know, parking is free, so it's a much different situation this year than it was last year. So those are my comments. Yes, I would. Anyone else wish to comment on it?
I.
I just have one question. So they're, they're asking for parking relief, but they're not asking for a waiver of any of the other things, police, city services.
Correct.
Okay.
Similar to the chamber, they are paying for the staffing needed for streets personnel, public safety personnel, um, and they are paying for their road closures, which is a hundred and fifty dollars each, so three hundred dollars. They are requesting just the parking.
Okay.
Well, I, I do, I think that, uh, in our town in the summertime, um, events are the things that draw people here. And so I appreciate the partnership of people who organize events. We organize our own events and it's a big lift to organize an event and then to host it. Um, so if other people organize good events that bring people, I guess we have to weigh the costs and benefits, but I think there are benefits to, to bringing people into Oxford on the weekends and I hope that that can generate business for some of the businesses uptown.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. We'll move to the fourth one.
A resolution declaring certain city property no longer needed for any municipal purpose as surplus and authorizing the donation of surplus property to Westchester Township Police Department.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Anne, chief, it's good to see you.
Yes. Uh, so, uh, the Butler County O B I Task Force, uh, has possession of a, uh, two thousand and five utility trailer that they use for checkpoints. They, uh, obtained a new, a newer, uh, trailer and, uh, this is surplus property. And since we're the lead agency, um, we have to dispose of it. And Westchester Police, who originally obtained it, um, is asking, uh, to use it. So, um, in consultation with the Ohio Traffic Safety Office, they just asked that we pass a resolution donating it to Westchester.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Um, council, any questions or comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. We'll move to number five.
A resolution authorizing the School Resource Officer Program Memorandum of Understanding between the Talawanda School District and the City of Oxford and authorizing the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the city.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt it?
So moved.
Second.
And it's been moved and seconded. J J?
Uh, yes, this is a contract between Talawanda and, um, O P D that would just continue what we've done for several years now. Um, this would be for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, um, to provide three, uh, full-time school resource officers.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Thank you very much. Is there any counselor who would like to address this resolution?
I just have a question. Um, how are the three full-time S R Os broken down across the different schools and district? I'm confident we've covered this before, but.
Sure.
I've forgotten.
So, uh, there is a, a city, uh, police officer assigned to the high school, to the middle school and to Kramer Elementary.
Okay.
Um, the Butler County Sheriff's Office covers Bogan and Marshall, which both fall outside the city.
Okay, great. Yeah, S R Os are super important to a school district, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I appreciate that it's a partnership also, you know, that we partner with the district and it, it is a significant contribution of time and equipment to, to this, um, but I think the relationships, it's more than just security to the S R Os to a lot in the schools, so I, I appreciate them. And I know that the kids and parents in the schools appreciate them also.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted.
A resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Hendy Incorporated for the replacement of defective curb, gutters and/or sidewalk in the twenty twenty-five special assessment program at a cost of one hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars plus a contingency in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for a total cost not to exceed one hundred eighty-six thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hi, Michael.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. Uh, this is the second of four pieces of legislation to run the special assessment curb gutter sidewalk program for twenty twenty-five. Council's already passed a resolution of necessity. This resolution will hire a contractor to do the work for property owners that have opted not to do the work themselves. So we advertised for bids. We had, uh, four quality bids. Uh, Hendy Incorporated was the lowest bid. Uh, we've worked with them in the past. They've done super work, so we're anxious to award this contract and get started on the work.
Okay.
Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mike. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, thank you very much. Counselors, any questions, comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. We'll move to ordinances first reading.
An ordinance repealing and replacing the entire planning and zoning chapter eleven forty-one, correcting an inadvertent error which previously adopted ordinance number thirty-eight oh one on February eighteen, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. And we have Sam to talk to us about it.
Good evening, thank you. Yeah, it's like, uh, Ms. Barber said, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, between those two dates, uh, there was, because of how many ordinance amendments we've been doing in the zoning code, uh, there have, there was a section on the short-term rentals, primary residence requirement, which actually got accidentally taken out, uh, for those few months. So we're putting it back in and so what you have in the packet is the clean version with that added back in again. Uh, that was, if you recall, the primary residence requirement for those, uh, kind of suburban zoning districts outside the mall square. And, um, this would restore that. Um, that happened when we updated the alley development regulations with had that new site plan review process, which was in the same gigantic chapter. Uh, so, um, that was an accident that we recently caught and we wanted to fix that.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance on first reading? Okay, there's a lot in here and if people have questions, this would be an appropriate time to address those questions to Sam. Because I certainly have several.
Well, help me out, Sam. It's primarily on page, uh, one fifty-three. Where it's, uh, transit guest lodging are the two paragraphs that were left off, number six.
Yeah, we had transit guest lodging in there before, but there was a lot of language added for the primary residence.
Yeah.
That, and because, and actually this is, it's actually on the website, correct? Because of the frequency of our updates are, were not enough to actually put that, that error on the website. So it's just in our internal processes that it wasn't actually there.
So indeed, it says that there will be no more than one transit guest lodging booking per dwelling unit. So if someone had a large house, they can't do two rooms.
They can't do two units. They can do two rooms, they cannot do two dwelling units. So if you own a duplex, you could use one of them as an Airbnb, uh, but not the other one.
Could you do an Airbnb for two different people in two different bedrooms of the house?
Yes.
Okay, because that doesn't seem like that's what D says, that's why I'm asking.
That was the language that was from last fall, so we're not actually revising it any, um, that part. That, that, that's existing language. The part that's being added is the part for the, that requires, if an owner wants to have a, operate an Airbnb at their home, uh, they're allowed to do that as long as that home is their primary residence.
Right.
In one of those zoning districts.
Okay, thank you. And I know that the rest of it is carried over, but there's a lot of questions that I had on enforceability or whether we do enforce them.
Sure, yeah.
I know that we say that, um, outdoor vending machines and display items, um, should not, and this is on page one thirteen, such facilities shall not occupy unless designated on a site development plan, private sidewalks that impede pedestrian traffic and the public right of way. So I know we had a discussion of a property earlier. Do we enforce that? Particular provision?
Of storage on the sidewalk. I don't think there's active enforcement of it, if, unless it's blocking the, uh, free movement of pedestrians.
Because sometimes it does and sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah.
So I, I just think we need to be consistent in enforcing it. The one on residential fences says that a fence has to be two feet from the property side of any sidewalk. That seems like a long distance from the sidewalk. Is that what, do we enforce that currently?
During the fence permit review process, yeah, there's, uh, most of the sidewalks, uh, are, there's a gap between the front property line and the sidewalk.
Yeah, I knew there was a gap. I just didn't realize it was two feet.
It varies some, um, and that the sidewalk kind of, using the sidewalk as a means for helping a property owner decide where their property line is for spacing the fence back, sometimes help them with the cost of a survey. Uh, and usually that two feet is, uh, enough that it would have that back away out of the right-of-way line so that if the city wants to come in and do a public improvement project.
They don't have to tear down.
They're not having to tear down someone's private fence.
Which is important.
Yeah.
On, uh, home occupations, on the page one fifteen, it says that a home occupation has to have fewer than ten business visitors a week and no more than one business visitor at a time, which seems pretty restrictive. Tell me, could we enforce that or do we try to?
So.
Because I can imagine two people coming in to talk.
Sure. So, um, that, most of those home occupations are kind of unknown. The, the, the point of it is to, for them to operate without the neighbors kind of being affected by it negatively uh, for traffic, uh, primarily, if you remember the Music Academy that kind of started in the neighborhood and that was kind of the, the example that was way beyond the limits in the zoning code. Um, and those are, those are. Um, and those are, those are, when they're brought to our attention, we'll look into and talk with property owners.
So it's really based on complaint more than anything?
Typically, yeah. But, that being said, um, it is part of an economic development goals to, to make it, uh, so that people can start businesses in Oxford and grow them to the point that they want to stay in Oxford.
Right.
And if they're not able to start them, uh, perhaps in their home, uh, then that's not necessarily good, but we want to do it in a way that's safe and, and, um, appropriate in the neighborhood. But we also don't want to be having a conditional use review every time somebody wants to open a business, so it's trying to strike a good balance there.
I think that's probably a smart way to go about it, to be honest, and I, I do know that several very large corporations, like the example Qualcomm Corporation, started in a garage. So, that's how they get started in time.
Good example.
Okay, I have one other question. Actually, I have more, but they're not that important. It had to do with, uh, basketball, temporary, I don't know where it is now, but it had to do with, uh, temp, the, uh, movable basketball and it's not allowed to be in the street.
Okay.
And yet, every single one that I have ever seen in Oxford, of which there are several, is in the street and kids play basketball in the street and this clearly says that they're not to do that.
You got me on that one, I do not remember that being in the code, but
Yeah.
I will check that.
Check that out and see if that's what we want to be doing. There's another one that just, I just found humorous, was that solar panels should not cause the structure to exceed the height requirement for the zoning district. How thick would the solar panel have to be to violate the height requirement? I don't know if that's really necessary.
Some, yeah, it's, sometimes they are angled to benefit the sun, uh, usage a little bit more, but usually they're flat with the roof, so it's not an issue.
It isn't, then I'm, I'm guessing that if it came up, the BCA would let it go, just thinking that would happen.
Well, fortunately, we are rewriting all of the zoning code right now, so hopefully some of these things
So maybe you'll get some of these?
Yeah, if you want to dig into it, there's language about disco texts and billiard tables, you know? Our code, code is kind of an accretion of things over time and so it is a good opportunity to, we are gonna take a top-to-bottom look at the code.
Take a look at that one.
Yeah.
But back to the short-term rentals, is there's, if there's something that you think needs clarified, even though that was how it was adopted previously, uh, we can take a look at that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for putting up the Okay. We will have this up for a vote on second reading at our next meeting. We're now to second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-seven eighty-three, supplemental budget ordinance number three, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi?
Good evening, mayor and counselors. Um, I do have one change for the second reading. Um, after many negotiation efforts by Assistant City Manager Jessica Green, we did continue, agreed to continue our contract with the Short-Term Rental Collection GOVOS for one year. So we are actively exploring other options, uh, for processing and collecting, but to not renew this contract at this time, we would have no means to do that, so we are extending it for one year, even though we were not in agreement with the cost increase, so the twenty-eight fifty is the additional cost for that contract.
And that's on page one seventy-five, the last big, uh, packet. Any, oh, does anyone from the public, anyone from the public like to address this ordinance? Thank you. Counselors? All those, oh, no, we have to go through a, to a roll call, please.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Pritrich?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Snively?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted and we'll move to announcements and communications. I'll start with City Manager Doug Elliott.
Okay, I just have a couple of items, uh, just for the benefit, public's benefit. Uh, we had canceled the June third meeting and we mentioned at the last council meeting that we were gonna reschedule it, so I just want to make that clear. Uh, we canceled the meeting, uh, due to planned absence of several members of council and key staff, and then we had to reschedule it due to an earlier cutoff date for ODOT project awards and encumbrances, uh, which affects the award of the Oaks Phase Five, uh, construction project. And so we did check, there will be four members at the June third, uh, council meeting, uh, for a necessary quorum to approve the awarding of the Phase Five construction project resolution. And, uh, it is expected that Phase Five will require two construction seasons and will be completed by the fall of twenty-twenty-six. One other item that I wanted to bring up is that, as you know, there are at least six bills affecting property taxes in the legislature. And, uh, just recently, the Attorney General, Ohio Attorney General, accepted the petition, title, and summary of a proposed constitutional amendment to abolish property taxes in Ohio. The Ohio Ballot Board certified the measure. The petitioners will now be able to collect the required number of signatures to get the proposed amendment on the ballot. So this men, measure, if adopted, would be devastating for townships and school districts who rely heavily on this source of revenue. It would also affect counties, cities, and villages and other governmental jurisdictions. The real property tax provides just under thirteen percent of the City of Oxford's general fund revenue and is estimated to provide twenty-three percent of fire and EMS fund revenue in twenty-twenty-five. So as I said, the Ohio Legislature has been considering several bills to address rising property values and increasing property tax bills. Uh, I believe, though, the legislature should consider implementing a property tax circuit breaker, uh, which would cover owners and renters of all ages, use a broad definition of income, target property tax relief to those with greatest need and funded by the state. Uh, the state would provide property tax credits for homeowners and state-issued rebate checks for renters. At least thirty-three states have what qualifies as a property tax circuit breaker and I believe Ohio should consider one. When we look at household income levels, it's clear that property tax burdens fall disproportionately on low or moderate-income households, so I believe that that's the way we should go and, and not look at these other bills. I mean, one is to eliminate replacement levies. We discussed at our recent leadership meeting, a, a bill that would basically, uh, say that, uh, school districts, uh, couldn't have a fund balance over a certain amount and, and I don't think any of those things really get at, uh, the issue that's being addressed with these petitioners, with this petition, so I just wanted to share that with city council and that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike? Chief? Heidi? Chief? Okay. Welcome, Chad, it's very nice to have you.
Thank you very much, mayor. Uh, being the chair and the rest of my colleagues, I have nothing to add.
Somebody's gotta do it.
Yeah. Um, the next Wednesday, we have the, uh, Oxford Historic Preservation Day, which I know some are excited about, but can't be here, sorry. Um, on Wednesday, so it's starting at ten o'clock in the morning at the Arts Center and all the way into the evening, there'd be an award ceremony, so, um, excited to have our first annual, hopefully we'll continue that, uh, next May as well. And then we also have a bike and pedestrian, uh, virtual open house going on. Uh, we're trying to get to two hundred survey responses and we're about eighty right now, uh, so we've got that on all of our social media channels and in the newsletter and everything, so that, uh, that's the one that's being funded through federal transit, uh, the grant that was successful through VCRDA, uh, last year. Uh, so hoping to help people get around town without, um, using motorized transportation unless it's a bus, just helping to improve the corridors, uh, for that purpose, so a couple of things just wanted to keep you in mind, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessica?
I, I just want to say that I am humbled and honored by our community and the support it offers to our graduates of Talawanda High School, so we have a class of twenty-twenty-five graduating this Thursday and what an amazing event the scholarship awards night was to see names of community members and the Rotary and the, and the Community Foundation and just many, many, many others who, um, give back to our students so they can pursue education. It was a really emotional and touching night, so thank you to everyone who supports our youth and congratulations, class of twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you very much. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Well, I have two things. One, I guess I should get up there, but, you know, it was my graduation for my daughter last week, spent the weekend in Oxford as just a regular dad, uh, it was fantastic. Uh, I thought that the, the city shone, shined in every possible way, uh, the other parents noticed and that would not be possible unless everybody here and the staff that they work for. Uh, I know that there aren't many, uh, university parents who would take the time to say thank you for that, so I'll speak on behalf of all of them. Uh, and then the second thing is, is that, uh, you know, this week is gonna be interesting in Dayton because of the NATO Parliamentary Conference. Uh, I'm not suggesting that people necessarily go there unless you have a, want to protest and they've said, or have your voice heard in some way. Uh, there, there's security protocol there, I've just reviewed a, a contract for the chief, uh, to provide, uh, some ancillary support, but it is a interesting moment in history that something is gonna be so close to us locally that I would encourage people to watch because, uh, it is a historical event.
Thank you. Mike?
Nothing tonight, I hope everybody has a nice holiday weekend.
Okay, thank you. Alex?
Um, I was going to mention our first historic preservation day, um, that I can't be at, but I have seen the swag and it's very cool, so go get some before I can. Um, and then, speaking of historic preservation, we now have openings on both HAPC, so our Historic and Architecture Preservation Commission, as well as our Board of Zoning Appeals, so if you know anybody who's interested in zoning and/or has a background in historic preservation, encourage them to submit an application online. Um, and per that, um, I know we have had some time where it's been hard to fill those roles, so we were talking about maybe some ways that we could entice folks to take on some of the perhaps heavier lift boarding commissions, so maybe a question of if there's any sort of compensation that we could do for folks who serve on boards and commissions that kind of have some sort of judiciary oversight. As amazing as REC Board is, it's a really fun commission to be on and our, our decisions are usually not as intense and don't kind of keep you awake at night where sometimes BZA, HAPC, planning, those can be bigger, weightier decisions. So just a question about if we could look into if there's a mechanism to compensate folks for their time for those boards or commissions. Um, and I think that's it, because I think somebody in the audience who works for our newspaper is leaving soon, but not yet, so expect some really embarrassing compliments at our next meeting. Thank you.
I just wanted to paint a picture of what it feels like to be a permanent resident within the mile square, so I'm on one of the homes within the northwest part of the mile square, right? We have, we are proud of that part of the mile square because we actually have full-time people that live there. Um, and I love living next to the students, I like a mixed, diverse neighborhood, um, I've lived there for eight years. Uh, this has been the hardest year. Um, I have five football players who live next door to me, um, and they were great during football season, but for the past several weeks, it's been really late partying until four AM. And so we're pretty chill, my husband and I actually moved to the other side of the house to sleep away from them so that we can let them party, right? Um, but then Friday night, it just turned into, and they scream a lot, too, I don't know why they randomly scream, but they do. Um, it turned into screaming and then taking furniture and throwing it up onto their balcony, up against, it sounded like our fence, everywhere. It went on for an hour, I'm like, how much furniture do you have? And I called, I called the non-urgent dispatch line, someone came pretty quickly, there was some niceties exchanged, they said, you know, keep it down, police left, nothing happened. That proceeded to go on for two to three more hours. So I'm like, gosh, I don't want to waste our limited resources with our police officers, but at the same time, I'm struggling of, how do we be good neighbors with protecting the residents that we say we care about in the mile square? And we want them there, right? Like, I want to be there. How do we enforce, going back to enforcement at all levels, how do we enforce the noise violations that are there? Not just after eleven PM or ten PM that a lot of people mistakenly think, but it's all day, right? If it's more than twenty-five feet away from a property, if I can hear it from the other side of my house, that is more than twenty-five feet away. So, I'm just trying to think of how these ordinances are there for a reason, to try to make sure everyone is a good neighbor, so how can we work on enforcing it, making it so that it's fair to the person who's calling? And honestly, the reason why I didn't call is I was scared that that's what would happen, it would be like, ha, 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 be, be good, and then they would just leave, so it, it's, it's frustrating and trying to figure out how we can be better to try to protect everybody in the neighborhood. And then, also with littering, too, it's the same thing, we have the same argument of like, oh, let, let them celebrate, it's like, polluting and littering is very different than celebrating, so there are very distinct photographers who profit off of this plastic confetti that they're taking these photos with and we know exactly where they're going to do it, because they're the same locations. The photographers can be, and they're permanent residents, can be fined for littering. And so I do not understand why we are choosing not to enforce these things that can make it a cleaner place, a more pleasant place, a place in which we can actually have permanent residents in the mile square, because this is the first year I was like, I don't know if I can live here. So, I'm just begging for, if someone calls for help, it's probably been going on for a really long time and I have other neighbors around the corner, I don't know how they're putting up with it, because that's been going on all day and all night, so I'm just trying to think of how we can work on enforcement a little bit more about these things that people find incredibly frustrating. And if you need audio, I have audio to show you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Jason?
What I've been saying since, uh, the latest administration's been in place, uh, stay strong and keep up the good fight.
Thank you.
So, maybe someone spoke on it and I, maybe I missed it, but I, I wanted to, if, we did all just say it again, that Bob Blackford, former counselor, um, passed away, um, in, in late April and, you know, I just want to recognize Bob for his service, he was a person in the community for decades and decades and decades, you know, before I was here. And I didn't get to serve alongside, former Mayor McKean is here, he served alongside Bob, um, but just such a gentle soul guy who, and I know that that council that he served on did a lot of things, um, so I, you know, my condolences go out to his wife, Melissa, and all of his family and the people who knew and served with Bob and his friends on the Lions Club, um, so he was, he was a good guy and Oxford lost a good guy when Bob passed away.
Thank you very much, I, I was going to mention it, um, Bob was actually a good friend of mine and, uh, we go back to the nineteen-seventies and, uh, Bob was a businessman in town and, uh, he had a big impact on our community and not only through his business, but through serving on city council. And, uh, he was a good member of council, um, and, uh, he will be missed. I have a lot of very fond memories of doing things with Bob that maybe we shouldn't talk about. We had, we had a good time and he was a, a very good citizen and he will be missed. Um, I want to also just support, uh, what Chantel had to say, I think we need to look at that. Um, and, uh, take another serious look at how we can deal with it, there was, I was driving friends around who were visiting from California, kind of showing off the town, of course, it was Sunday and, uh, it was right after the graduation and, uh, yes, there was confetti in the gutters, uh, that can't be easily scooped up and we went by the, um, well, let me just say, a certain fraternity house in a very prime location uptown and there, this was like four o'clock in the afternoon and there were beer cans and all that kind of crap all the way around, right in our uptown. And I don't think that's appropriate and I think that at, you give, we do give them some leeway in the morning to clean it up, but by four o'clock, it needs to have been cleaned up long before four o'clock and I hope that we do a better job next year of policing that.
Can I just follow with a question? I know I know we've talked about enforcement, some of these are policing, some of these are property management and I know it's a topic for conversation. I'm just kind of curious when we're going to have that conversation because I imagine it would impact the budget. I'm a person who walks through the Mile Square on Collins Street and it's a little bit of a war zone all times a day. So, I just wondering, is that going to be a context of our budget conversations?
We, staff and I, we've discussed it and we've got several ideas. I mean, you know, with the parties on graduation week and that's a real challenge. I mean, what I would suggest to Chantel is you should have probably called the police back because, you know, we're nice once, but if they continue, then they get a ticket. And, you know, I mean, I have to look out my window at a, at a party house and, you know, we, one day I finally called Police Chief up and I said, JJ, I think we need to write him a ticket. This is a mess again. So, they sent a cruiser down, the fire department sent a truck down because they had a little fire in the front yard that no one was tending that was still going on. And so, it's, it's a real challenge because, you know, there's a lot of students that obey the laws, but there are many that disregard them. And, but, you know, we have some ideas. One thing that I want to push is that we want to make the property owners more responsible, you know, because we now deal with the tenants and sometimes that doesn't work. So, we have some ideas. It's not going to solve all of our problems because the students greatly outnumber the full-time residents. I mean, you know, there's 16,000 students here and some of them have some big parties. I mean, I drove around on graduation day and in the afternoon and most of the parties seemed pretty tame. Litter hadn't really started forming yet and I drove around Sunday and saw the same thing that you did. And so, you know, I think with some of the students, the motto of love and honor should be, it should include, and litter with that, you know, because that's what they're doing. And so, they're not respecting our community, but, you know, it's something that we've been dealing with every year and, and we're going to try some things that might make a difference.
When do you think might be an opportunity for us to have that discussion?
On June 17th, there was a work session called the Council Budget Priorities Work. And they will be bringing forward all the research and the ideas you gave us in our retreat and any other staff-initiated ideas that have emerged throughout this past six months. So, that'll be an hour-long work session and that'll be your opportunity to really give us your opinions before we develop the operating and capital budget for '26.
Okay. Thank you, Jess.
Yeah, I think that's conversation because some of it's operational. How do we use our existing resources, some of it's new resources? But there's, it's multifaceted because some of it, again, is policing, some of it is noise, some of it is property and we've got issues with all those things.
And some of it is kind of what you, you get being in a college town and I, I understand that, but there's also a limit to what people should have to put up with.
And can I just ask a question? I don't know what the paperwork is like after writing a ticket, but it would be like every single person that's speeding or not, did not pay their parking meter, got a free pass. It's in our ordinance, it's in our code. That phone call came after weeks and weeks and weeks of not being able to sleep. So, it's hard to, I'm, I'm wondering if I call again and they have to drive back out there from wherever they are, isn't that more effort?
JJ, do you want?
Yeah. Can't speak to that specific night. I, I don't know without looking it up whether they got a ticket or not, but, but no, I would encourage you to call again because as the city manager said, sometimes the officer gets there and doesn't find them in violation at the time and doesn't know that you've dealt with this weeks and weeks on end and it's what the officer finds at the time. We do write a lot of litter tickets, we write a lot of noise tickets. It's literally a matter of staffing when, you know, your, the last two weekends, we've had DUIs at 11:00 in the morning for different crashes. That ties up a couple of officers and you only got two or three officers working the road. So, you know, it's priorities and, and addressing different calls. We, unfortunately, we do proactively police for that, but we understand that when it's a complaint, that it's already disturbed someone, so they're more likely to get a ticket. So, the, 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 the confetti poppers that you mentioned, we do address those when we see them, but those happen so quickly and they're gone and we, you know, the officers are going to traffic crashes, many other social issues. I mean, when you got two officers working the road, that's, we're limited in what we can do. We get speeding complaints for all these different roads. It's just juggling around different priorities. But we do, we, we, we will look and address, you know, how we can enforce it better, but it's challenging, you know?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.